Early hours, it's only three thirty, my sorry.
Uh-oh.
Do they start tomorrow?
Oh, they started, oh, they said five. Yeah, jury selection yesterday.
Yeah.
And, uh, are you open to the arguments? Cause they threw in a couple of, uh, couple of charges against him today.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, aggravated, aggravated battery and.
Gee.
I heard what you did this morning, aggravated battery.
I was at the meeting yesterday, there was going to be a crowd starting to.
I don't know where they're at, cause, uh, the street next to our buildings. We're being off for media, parking.
Yeah.
And then the block next to the. In order, just come here. This is, same, uh, this, not art, but, uh, same.
What he did, he did, or he's not going to wait for all the ones that he did.
Only one with a thing.
I bet.
You ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead and call the regular meeting of the East Peoria City Council in order, roll call please.
Commissioner Decker.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Mingus, Sutherland.
Here.
Mayor Call.
Here.
While present except Commissioner Mingus, Your Honor.
Thank you, please rise from the eminacation, remain standing for the pledge.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and every day you give us. We pause in this moment to give thanks for our blessings of our community. We celebrate the unique spirit and strength that binds us here. The pride we feel in our shared history, our common goal, our ground and the values we uphold. Guide our hearts and hands, that every action we take may contribute to forming a better community on compassion, justice and mutual respect. May we be agents of reconciliation, peace and progress in the year to come. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approve the minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting held on October seventh, two thousand twenty-five be approved as printed.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried. All right, under communications, I do have one proclamation this evening. Whereas East Peoria, Illinois is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism and service. And whereas East Peoria, Illinois is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends and community. And whereas East Peoria, Illinois is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas East Peoria, Illinois acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create five hundred and fifty extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November first, two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore, I, John P. Call, Mayor of East Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November one, two thousand twenty-five to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or our world a better place. We are a very giving community and I know as a city, we, uh, we host a lot of not-for-profit events uh, that are for great causes and those events would not, uh, would not happen without the volunteerism that, uh, we, we see throughout the years and we, uh, we greatly appreciate everybody who does volunteer, whether it's for a nonprofit or we have folks that volunteer on their own throughout this community, whether it's picking up trash or supporting other entities in other ways, so. Thank you to all of those that do participate. All right, public comment, anyone wish to address the council on an agenda item, please step forward. And I'm seeing no one. Commissioner Hill, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the consent, agenda consisting of items numbered one through four. Item number one adopts a resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-six resolution to approve payment of the scheduled bills listed on schedule number eleven in the amount of one million eight hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. Item number two adopts the orders number four-eight-seven-two on second reading, ordinance, and ordinance approving an option agreement for communications easement and for an easement and assignment agreement with GTP Acquisition Partners Two LLC for the Lilac Lane Cell Tower site. Item number three adopts a resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-five-nine on second reading, resolution approving annual renewal of service subscription and licensing agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. for the city's enterprise resource planning software system. Item number four adopts a resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-five-eight on second reading, resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of a two thousand twenty-six Mac Granite tandem dump truck with installed equipment from Vanguard Truck Centers for the Public Works Department is listed on the agenda for this meeting to be considered by omnibus vote.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that items numbered one through four listed on the consent agenda be hereby approved and adopted and items numbered two through four having been read once by their title and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Nope, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner.
He can have, there you go.
I thought I was doing the right thing.
You are.
Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Okay, first thing, I've got a few tonight, uh, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-eight-seven-five here to attach an ord- ordinance amending zoning regulations in Title Five of the East Peoria City Code for permitted uses allowed in R-five senior living facility district be read at the, uh, length by the clerk and that said ordinance number four-eight-seven-five be accepted on its first reading and be hereby adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker, madam clerk?
Whereas the city of East Peoria has proposed amendments to certain zoning regulations founded Title Five of the East Peoria City Code which proposes amendments are herein after set forth. Whereas city staff seek to provide an additional permitted special use on property zoned as R-five zoning districts, senior living facility district to allow non-senior multifamily developments as would typically be allowed in the R-four zoning district multifamily dwelling district as a special use in R-five zoning district. Whereas after holding a public hearing on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five, pursuant to duly published notes, the East Peoria zoning board repeals has recommended approval of the proposed amendment as provided herein. Whereas the city council finds the adoption of the following proposed amendments to the city's zoning regulations serve the best interest of the, and the public good of the city of East Peoria and its citizens. Now therefore, being ordained by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that section one, subpart B twelve is hereby added to Title Five, chapter nine, section seven of the East Peoria City Code as follows, five dash nine dash seven, R-five senior living facilities district. B, special uses, twelve, non-senior focused multifamily developments. Section two, subpart one F, is hereby added to Title Five, chapter three, section one of the East Peoria City Code as follows, five dash three dash one, used districts established. One, residential districts, F, R-five senior living facilities district. Section three, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk. Set clerk is ordered to keep at least three copies here available for public inspection in the future and in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section four, this ordinance is in addition to all the ordinances on the subject and shall be construed therewith, accepting as to that part or conflict with any other ordinance and in the event of such conflict, provisions here shall govern. Section five, if any section, paragraph, clause or provision of this ordinance shall be held invalid. The invalidity of such section, paragraph, clause or provision shall not affect any of the other provisions of this ordinance. Section six, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval in ten day period of publication in the manner provided by law.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, this one is pretty straightforward. Um, recently we expanded our zoning, uh, reg- our zoning regulations to include R-five senior living facility. And so this one is, uh, this amendment here, this change is pretty simple to allow some flexibility for us and really some flexibility for the, um, property owner. We're amending it to allow based on a special use that in our R-five senior living facility that an R-four multifamily would be considered and it would be, uh, processed or handled as a special use which would allow us, uh, as a city to review the details of whatever that change in, um, repurposing of, of a property that may have been R-five to give some consideration to what's, what's, what's the details and allow us to put conditions on those properties i- as part of the special use process. And so this is, just gives us, uh, additional flexibility and, uh, taking care of properties that may have been R-five.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, you know, I mean, the hope here is, you know, should something come along, uh, we've made it very clear that we look at market rate, multifamily housing, uh, and that's what we would entertain, no different than what we've done down here in the Levy District, so. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois, that resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-four resolution approving a one-year extension of cleaning services contract for city buildings with PhD Services LLC be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-zero-six-four be accepted on its first reading, as read by its title, be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland.
About three years ago, we entered into an agreement with PhD Services. Again, looking for, uh, let's say reputable firm, we had reputable firms before that, but looking for a change, looking for somebody, uh, firm that we could rely on to cover a very diverse set of requirements for our city and its facilities, be it here, City Hall, East Side and other, uh, facili- or, yeah, other facilities or buildings on those properties. And so this agreement that we had was coming to an end and it had an option for a one-year extension and we're gonna exercise that at this time. It was prudent, uh, to continue our services with them and then evaluate in another year whether, uh, we do something different or s- again, continue on with the services here.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, uh, as a matter of record, we're very, very pleased with PhD and their services they provide, they've done an outstanding job. Uh, basically, the one-year extension just provides us for an opportunity with the new facility manager to allow him to build that relationship and then we'll take a look at the agreement uh, and either negotiate a new agreement with them in a year from now or go in a different direction. But just for a matter of record, we're extremely pleased with, uh, their services as they stand today, so. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-eight-seven-three here to attach an ordinance amending the hotel motel tax provisions of the East Peoria City Code to include stronger regulations, um, stronger enforcement mechanisms for collection of the tax be read at length by the clerk and that said, an ordinance number four-eight-seven-three be accepted on its first reading and then hereby, be hereby adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker, Madam Clerk?
Whereas pursuant to section eight dash three dash fourteen of the municipal code sixty-five ILCS five slash eight dash three dash fourteen, city has the authority to impose tax upon all persons engaged in the business of renting, leasing or letting rooms in a hotel within the city at a rate not to exceed six percent of the gross rental receipts from such renting, leasing or letting hotel rooms, hotel motel tax. Whereas pursuant to section eight dash three dash fifteen of the Illinois Municipal Code, sixty-five ILCS five slash eight dash three dash fifteen, corporate authorities have all powers necessary to enforce the collection of any tax imposed and collected, including the power to create and enforce liens against the property where the hotel is located. And whereas the city has enacted chapter twenty-seven of Title Three of the East Peoria City Code implementing the hotel motel tax at a rate of six percent and has also enacted chapter fourteen of Title Three of the East Peoria City Code requiring hotels operating in the city of East Peoria to obtain a hotel license from the city. And whereas city officials now seek to make provisions to the hotel motel tax provisions of the city code to include a procedure for the collection of delinquent taxes for owners of hotels or motels in the city that includes the ability to file a lien on the property for the purpose of the collection of delinquent hotel motel taxes. Whereas the city council finds that adoption of the proposed amendments to chapters fourteen and twenty-seven of Title Three of the East Peoria City Code serves the best interest of the city of East Peoria and its citizens, now therefore be it ordained by the city couns- by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, that section one, Title Three, chapter fourteen, section twenty of the East Peoria City Code is hereby amended to read as follows, additions are indicated by underline, deletions by strikeout. Three dash fourteen dash twenty hotel or motel room renting tax, no licensee shall will fully fail to file tax returns with the city showing tax receipts received with respect to each hotel and motel room or make such payment as are required pursuant to chapter twenty-seven of this title. Section two, Title Three, chapter twenty-seven, section six of the East Peoria City Code is hereby amended to read as follows, additions are indicated by underline, deletions by strikeout. Three dash twenty-seven dash six, collection, one person shall fail to file, self-fail- fail to pay any taxes herein provided, the city attorney shall, upon request by the city clerk, bring your cost to be brought in action to enforce the payment of the tax on behalf of the city in any court of competent jurisdiction filing on the property pursuant to section three dash twenty-seven dash twelve of the city code or both and one appropriate to foreclose upon a filing pursuant to section three dash twenty-seven dash thirteen of the code. Section three, new section twelve is hereby added to Title Three, chapter twenty-seven of the East Peoria City Code as follows, three dash twenty-seven dash twelve, delinquent taxes liens. In the event any hotel operator's occupation tax, including penalties, is not paid within sixty days after payment thereof is due, such charges shall be deemed and are hereby declared to be delinquent and thereafter, thereafter such delinquent taxes and all subsequent taxes, including penalties incurred while the delinquent charges remain unpaid at all costs of filing any lien notices and of releasing any liens, including associated attorney's fees, shall constitute a lien upon the real estate to which such taxes relate. The city clerk or the city attorney is hereby authorized to file a firm statement showing such delinquencies and subsequent taxes, including penalties in the office of the Recorder of Dees of Tazewell County, Illinois. These statements shall contain the legal description of the involved premises, the amount of the unpaid taxes and penalties and a notice that the city claims a lien for the total amount. The filing of such statements shall be deemed lien notices for the payment of such taxes and penalties. Section four, sec- new section thirteen is hereby added to Title Three, chapter twenty-seven of the East Peoria City Code as follows, three dash twenty-seven dash thirteen, foreclosure of lien and other judicial action. Any and all liens for hotel operator's occupation taxes established by law against premises to which they relate may be enforced and foreclosed by and on behalf of the city at any time in the appropriate Circuit Court of Tazewell County, Illinois, according to the rules and practices of said court. Said liens also may be enforced and foreclosed by intervention at any time in any suit already commenced in said court, in any other court when said intervention is proper under the law. Whenever the city is made a defendant in any suit in any court, shall have full power to enforce said liens and said proceedings at any time in any manner permitted by law. The party of part, the party or parties responsible for said taxes and penalties may also be sued for the amount thereof as debt owed to the city. The city attorney is hereby authorized to take any judicial action referred herein on behalf of the city or to authorize any other person to do so. In the event the city of East Peoria is required to institute litigation to collect the outstanding amounts owed under this article or to foreclose on any lien, the city of East Peoria shall be entitled to recover for reasonable legal fees in collecting said unpaid tax. No methods herein provided for collecting said taxes shall be considered as excluding any other remedy or any other method of collection of said taxes, but shall be concurrent with all other remedies and methods. Section five, this ordinance is hereby ordered to be published in pamphlet form by the East Peoria City Clerk and Set Clerk is ordered to, ordered to keep at least three copies here available for public inspection in the future in accordance with the Illinois Municipal Code. Section six, this ordinance is in addition to all the ordinances on the subject and shall be construed therewith, accepting as to that part or conflict with any other ordinance and in the event of such conflict, the provisions here shall govern. Section seven, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval in ten day period of publication in the manner provided by law.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Yes, it was a little concerning to, um, that we've got a, we've had repeated issues in this space which is driven at least in part to give us a, a little bit, uh, stronger of a collection wording here, cause again, our current code allows for our city attorney to take action but doesn't give us other means and the, and the change here is doing just that, it's, uh, providing us a means to put liens like we've do in many, or many, uh, organizations would put a lien on somebody's property when they have not paid their proper property tax or pa- pay their bills. So in this case, we're extending, uh, our abilities or improving our abilities to collect on said hotel motel tax and that additional, um, mechanism here is that we're able to put liens on, on a property that's not paying or not current or past due on their, uh, hotel motel tax, so.
Very well said. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
That is all for me tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Decker.
All right, thank you, Mayor, I think I have five items tonight. First of all, resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-zero be resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois. The resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-zero here to attach to resolution allocating one million five hundred thousand dollars of motor fuel tax funds for the two thousand twenty-six street maintenance program and confirming and approving the, an engineering agreement and associate a rate of compensation for engineering services related to the two thousand twenty-six street maintenance program be hereby approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-zero having been read once by its title and having laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland. I, um, as I mentioned last meeting, this is, we tried to get it out early so we can get the best, uh, rate. The, with the contractors are hungry, so we, we get their best rate and then, uh, it is, I think everybody's intention, again, I've really appreciated the, the support that we've had from the entire council, uh, to increase the money as much as possible for our street maintenance. We've really made some big, big, huge improvements, especially over the last couple of years and, um, be happy to continue to do that.
And Brett Tucker mentioned and staff this morning that they're currently, uh, undergoing the rating uh, for the streets for this program, so those should be released, uh, in the very near term. Near future, I should say, anyway. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Next, Mayor, resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-three be resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois. The resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-three, resolution authorizing the payment of invoices from Laser Electric Incorporated for West Camp Street, uh, LED retrofit for city maintained street lights and grid smart camera system at Springfield and Muller Road Projects in the amount of forty thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-three be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland. This one, uh, is actually, the work was completed, we, uh, we did so while some other work was being done, so we got quite a bit of, uh, better value. Uh, this is cleaning that up and, um, bringing it in front of, uh, the public.
Very good, any discussion? Done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Next, Mayor, resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-two be resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Illinois. The resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-two, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county of Tazewell for animal and rabies control services be approved. Mr. Mayor, I move you that this resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-two be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be ta- laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspection.
May I have a second, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland. This is something that we do yearly, a little bit of history, a long time ago, my dad actually did this, uh, after retiring from the fire department for the city of East Peoria, but it, it's become a countywide service and, uh, very, uh, service people don't think about until they need it.
It's a very good service. Yeah, I'd just point out that this, uh, this agreement is, uh, thirty-six thousand seventy dollars and twenty-four cents is the annual cost and that's, uh, reflective of a four-point-eight percent increase over a year prior, which was the same percentage increase the year prior to that. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Next, Mayor, ordinance number four-eight-seven-four, Mr. Mayor, I move you that ordinance number four-eight-seven-four here to attach, an ordinance amending the East Peoria City Code to provide the East Peoria Police Department with access to lock boxes on commercial buildings be accepted on its first reading as read by its title and be laid on the table for no less than one week for public inspections.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Beat you. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Um, for years, uh, being on the fire department, I, I dealt with this and, uh, just for uh, public knowledge, those boxes that are on side of the building, they're not something that's easily accessible. Uh, the fire department, we actually have to, uh, set off, uh, it used to be a code and then it's a, a personal password or a passcode for each employee, but, uh, the key is unlocked and it can then be, open up the, um, box on the side of the building, access it in case of an emergency, but then it's, uh, relocked again, so, uh, these lock boxes are very valuable and I can attest to times where it's actually made a significant difference in some incidents. So the police department, uh, and, and it has happened over the years, uh, that there have been times where it's been appropriate, uh, for them to get into a business. I, I wanna put the, uh, public minds at ease, it's not just, uh, allowing police officers to go into buildings throughout town, it's more, I'll just give you a perfect, uh, scenario. Um, if, if the, uh, officer needs access to a larger complex, like, like an, um, apartment building or something and there's a domestic going on inside, you wouldn't want them to be stopped out at that outer door, so this would, yeah, give them the ability to get inside and help save somebody's life when needed, so. Something that I think is important and kinda surprised it hasn't been, uh, talked about before now.
Kinda prompted the thing, just having that facility here which is secure, so after hours they would need access, should there be an emergency, as you just described, so. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call?
Commissioner Decker.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Sutherland.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
While present voting aye, Your Honor.
Thank you, motion carried.
Next, and my last one for the night, Mayor, resolution number two-five-two-six dash zero-six-five. Uh, resolution, city of East Peoria in support of the Illinois America two-twenty-five commem- commemoration, commemoration, I have to practice that word. Whereas the United States. We just wait till the end. Whereas the United States of America will commemorate its two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary on July fourth, two thousand twenty-six, marking a historic milestone in the nation's history. Whereas on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, the Second Continental Congress formally adopted the Declaration of Independence asserting the American colonies' freedom from British rule and laying the foundation for the principles of democracy. of democracy and self-governance. And the U.S. Semi-Quincentennial, that's the one I was worried about, Commission, known as the American Two Fifty Commission, American two fifty dot org, was established by Congress in two thousand sixteen to plan and orchestrate the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence, aiming to engage all Americans in commemorating the historic event through educational initiatives. The Illinois America Two Fifty Commission, IL two fifty dot org, was established to develop, encourage, and execute an inclusive commemoration, something about that word, in observance of the founding of the United States of America and the Illinois imperative role in the nation's history. And whereas the United, the Illinois America Two Fifty Commission encourages communities, libraries, schools, local governments, historical societies, cultural institutions, and individuals of all ages to develop inclusive commendations, commemorations, commemorations, that reflect on Illinois' role in the nation's history and development. And whereas recognizing and supporting the Illinois America Commission will help ensure the meaningful and educational commemoration of all residents and future generations. And whereas the commemoration provides an opportunity to reflect on the state's historical significance, honor, and achievements of its people, and inspire civic engagement. And whereas the city of East Peoria hereby formally supports the Illinois America Two Fifty Commission in a mission to commemorate our nation's two hundred fiftieth anniversary, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of East Peoria, Tazewell County, Illinois, expresses its support of the Illinois America Two Fifty Commission and encourages all Illinois communities to organize, participate in local events leading up to and culminating on July fourth, two thousand twenty-six, to celebrate America's two hundred fiftieth anniversary. Mr. Mayor, I move you that resolution number two five two six dash zero six five be adopted as presented.
May I have a second, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland.
Thank you, Mr. Sutherland. Sometimes words just don't fit with how someone sees it and tries to pronounce it. But this is something that is happening, and it's, it's our formal recognition of it and support for the event.
Yeah. Going to be a big year next year for the nation, two hundred fifty years strong. And so we're going to partake in the festivities. And I was telling Commissioner Decker prior to the meeting, the resolution's one of the first steps, jumping on board with the celebration. But we're going to figure out what we're going to contribute as a city to help commemorate our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary that will be included as part of the formal celebration on a national level. So it's pretty exciting. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, your honor.
Thank you. Motion carried.
That is all, happy.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Sutherland.
I have nothing tonight, your honor.
Very good. Public comment. Anyone wish to address the council on a non-agenda item? Please step forward to the microphone. Welcome. If you haven't been here before, sir, just so you know, we got a five-minute time limit on public comments.
All right. Yeah, it's my first time here. So how you guys doing?
Good.
We here because we own a smoke shop in East Peoria. It's the one next to Kadoba. And we received a letter from the city saying there is a ban for hemp products and kratom products. And they gave us ten days or maybe seven days for it to be sold or to get rid of it. And this is not a lot of good time. And we here to ask for like, maybe a better time, you know, like three months, ninety days, because ten days is not enough. And we here to ask for more time, please.
Well, unfortunately, we're not able to do that. We already took formal action. So it went into effect ten days after the approval of the ordinance, which was at the October seventh, or, yeah, October seventh meeting, two weeks ago. So that went into effect on October seventeenth. So that action's already been taken.
Yeah, we received the letter, I think, seven days before, like, on the, I think, the tenth.
Sure.
And we only given seven days. And for us, for a small business, you know, family business, we had a lot of products. We never like, because we know we could sell it in the store, nothing against the law. We always have it, like, ID'd everybody over twenty-one. So we were surprised how the, like, the city didn't give us enough time, because for us, that's a big loss. The product's in the store, and they already been opened for us to sell them to people. And we can't even, like, return them. And it's a big loss for us as a small business. And that's why we asking the city, like, for a little bit, like, more time, so we could, like, either sell the products we have, like, have, see how we're going to do with it. Because now we losing a lot of money, and because we didn't have the enough time to, you know. It was, I know the decision been made, but we don't want to, like, change the decision or anything. We just want time, you know, because, like I say, it's a big loss for us.
Well, I can, I can appreciate your comments. Thank you for being respectful, by the way.
You're welcome.
Coming in here and being professional and respectful, that goes a long way.
You're welcome.
So, Scott, I can't, not trying to pin this on you. I mean, I don't even know that that is something that the city could even consider.
Well, mayor, Commissioner, you certainly have the ability to potentially put a moratorium on the enforcement of that provision.
If you thought that was appropriate. So I don't see anything that would prohibit the city from doing what, what this gentleman has asked. You know, that's obviously a decision for you folks. But you can certainly do that. You could do that in a couple of different ways. I mean, you could formally adopt a moratorium. You could give a direction to the police chief just to hold off on enforcement for, you know, whatever period of time you thought was appropriate.
Okay. So here's what I'll tell you. I'm not going to put the elected officials on the spot here this evening and ask them where they land on this. So I will individually talk to each one, and we'll get back in touch with you as to what that decision might be. I can tell you, just for me personally, I'm willing to give you a response today.
Thank you so much.
I don't support a moratorium, but I'm open-minded enough to, to think if the majority of the council is willing to allow for some time, we can discuss this with their chief. But either way, I don't want to put anyone here on the spot this evening, so we'll get back in touch with you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And one more question. How will, you guys will send us a letter, like, inform us of the decision?
Yeah. Well, we'll probably contact you personally. I think we have his contact information.
Yeah.
And let you know. But if there's a decision that affects not just your business, but every business, by all means, you'll all be given a written notice.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much to all of you guys. Have a nice day.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the council on agenda item? Non-agenda? Nope. Okay. Very good. Comments from the council. Commissioner Decker?
The only thing I was going to bring up, mayor, is the, obviously, we're all done now. The cleanup week, and it, it went well. But it took a little bit longer than our normal one week, but the crews were out. And it seems like whenever I would drive through town during that week, they, they were constantly busy. So driving around town, I did try to, you know, pay attention and notice. I personally, the ones I saw, thought the, the residents did a good job of, of not making too large of piles. There were a couple that I, I think were suspect. And one, I was watching, and I was wondering how it was going to be dealt with. It actually was picked apart quite a bit and dwindled down to the appropriate size by the time the day came. So it's a, it's one of those things that we're, we're happy to allow that in town and support that. And we just want to make sure to be, do everything we can to make sure it continues. That's all, mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, I have one item tonight. The organization Near and Dear My Heart has their flagship event coming up here the first Saturday in November, November first, the Teresa Tracy Trot is, will have their annual event. So it's not too late to get registered.
What year is this?
This is.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. Man. I, I think it's, it's, would be the fourteenth. I think COVID took one off, because I did the math, and I thought it was fourteen. But, yeah, thirteenth actual race, I think, is what they're, they're saying. But yes, the, the event is coming up. You can go to teresatracetrot.com and find online registration from that site. So if you're not doing anything, you know somebody impacted or affected by pancreatic cancer, we welcome you to come out and, and meet a lot of other people impacted or affected. And if you're just a runner that loves to run in the cold weather, we've got that for you, too. So that's all for me.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Sutherland?
I got one little thing tonight. I'm, I always preface my, my remarks by my remarks by saying, if I screw this up, somebody will jump up and correct me, I'm sure. I don't get on Facebook very often, but I was reading people's opinions about the new bank going up downtown, East Peoria, that they, they think that the city council has a say-so of who builds what where. And that's not true. I didn't even know the bank was going there. I didn't even know it was going to be a bank. Kind of heard the rumors toward the end, but until they put the banner up there, I wasn't for sure. So what happens in the city, if I'm going to say this right, the zoning is like, if it's an R one, it's a single-family house. If it's an R two, it's a multifamily house. Or R three, it's apartments. So if it's zoned R three and somebody wants to build an apartment complex, as long as they stay away from the, the setback rules and regulations and the parking rules and regulations, we never see any of that stuff. It's just, it's their right to, to do that if they own the property and it's zoned correctly. So those of you that think that, that we are saying we want more Dollar General stores, or more gas stations, or more banks, you've, you've got it all wrong. But I'm going to, I'm going to say this to you guys out there in, in TV land, and that is that people that do their ordering on the internet, they're leaving such a void for the brick and mortar stores, leaving small communities like us. All that's left to take their place is gas stations and banks, you know, and Dollar Generals for convenient stuff. So if you guys want to support your community, support your community by buying in your community. And I don't mean just in East Peoria only. If you can't find it in East Peoria, go to Morton, go to Washington, go to Peoria. Stay off the internet. That's my opinion. And I'm showing my age. I'm done.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Sutherland. Just a quick note, on Thursday at noon, right out here in Levy Park, weather permitting, we're going to unveil the Camp Herring Historical Marker. And I don't want to steal the thunder of those that will be attending and have some brief remarks, but we welcome the public to join us. That's at noon on Thursday, right out here. For those that don't know, East Peoria was home to Camp Herring during War, War One, tied into Holt Manufacturing at the time. So interesting story. We'll share some more details on Thursday, but we'll be, it will be a state historical marker right here in East Peoria. So look forward to that celebration on Thursday. And with that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn on Tuesday evening, November fourth, two thousand twenty five, six fifteen.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Decker, any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Commissioner Decker?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Sutherland?
Aye.
Mayor call?
Aye.
While present, voting aye, your honor.
Thank you. We are adjourned until we meet again.